I will call the August meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise. And would trustee Drapka please make his clutch?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
Present at county floor.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Present.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
At the record note clerk Blau is in attendance.
Thank you. All right, let us address the approval of minutes of the July 7th Committee of the Home. It is before you in your packets. What is your pleasure?
Motion to accept the minutes of the July 7th Committee of the Home meeting.
Thank you, I have a motion by trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Heilenbach. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes of the Committee of the Home of July 7th, 2020. Please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the July 14th Board of Trustees meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th Board of Trustees meeting.
Trustee Clark moves the adoption of the July 14th Board of Trustees meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Heilenbach seconds. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Communications. Clerk Blau, do we have anything?
We have nothing. Nobody wants to write to us.
All right. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. Do we have some public comment in the audience? I see assessor Zickowitz stepping to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I am here as assessor and supervisor. The two here in row. I'm just giving an update of what's going on in our office. So, we are currently assisting residents with appeals for review. And we started last week. And the appeal period runs through August 28th. And we've been helping people mostly through email and mail. And our residents are being really understanding that we can't see them face to face right now. So, so I say for the most part, we're doing really well. And we are keeping appointments to just the more complicated cases where people have to bring in extra documents. And they're coming and dropping them off and then going and sitting in the room across the hall. So, so far, things are working out. And we have a good procedure going and so far, so good. Things are pretty moving along pretty quickly. So, so it's about all that's happening right now.
Thank you very much. Is this in addition to the appeal third that we did in March?
Yes. So, in Cook County, all taxpayers can appeal twice at the county level. So, the appeal that we did in March was for the assessor's office. And the assessor's office decided on those appeals. It took them longer than usual. And then, right after they made those decisions, they sent out a COVID-19 adjustment for all properties in Riverside Township. Pretty much all properties. There were very few properties that were not included in that adjustment. And so, so after that final number, now the Board of Review will take appeals from anyone who feels that their home might still be over assessed. So, so we're just, we're not, we're just seeing certain classifications of homes that we still think are probably over assessed. I would, I would say that overall, I think things are looking pretty good. But, but you know, it's a, it's a complicated system. And appraising by mass appraisal is, can, can be pretty complicated and lead to a lot of differences. So, so that's why we have this appeal period with the Board of Review. The Board of Review is independent of the assessor's office. They don't have to, to support the assessor's decision. They just look at the evidence that the taxpayer brings. And so, we usually have very good luck, our taxpayers have very good luck with the Board of Review. And Commissioner Dan Patlick and his team are really good. And they, they are very clear to us with what they look for. And so, we can be clear to our residents what they, we need to present their cases. And so, we have good success with them.
I see that they've scheduled several virtual meetings.
Yes, yes. They've scheduled a couple of virtual meetings. And I was going to try to, to send out that information on constant contact today, but we, we had the electricity down. So, I'll get one out tomorrow. But almost everyone on our list, I think, is on his list. So, I think almost everyone got it. And so, they do have a couple of meetings scheduled. And I would like to sign up for one of those.
Did you find that the communication about the COVID adjustment caused any confusion because it came out so close to the actual time?
It did. It caused quite a bit of confusion. So, we had to deal with a lot of that. And so, hopefully, going forward, the assessor's office will figure it out for the opening, the townships that they're opening after us. We're always the guinea pig. So, we always get the, yeah, the mistake, we, you know, we get the mistakes and the things that they could do better. And so, they usually iron things out after, after they hear from us. So, so I think going forward, the assessor's office will be able to have more information about how that letter is being interpreted and make any adjustments from thereon.
Have we got our tax books?
Yes, the second installment bills were mailed July 1st. And the original due date is August 3rd. But it was, it is delayed till October 1st without any penalties because of COVID. So, that's a good thing. I think some of our residents are taking advantage of that. Yeah, but otherwise, things are moving along.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Our next item, I would like to flip items A and B if you don't mind. Because we got notice today that the speaker for the grant application cannot be here tonight because he has to be at a school board meeting. And, but our auditor, Ed Tracy, is here. So, I would like to give him the courtesy of going next before waiting for an item that we'll, we can talk about without anyone present. So, Mr. Tracy, want to join us?
Thank you very much, Mr. Tracy. Your audit report for the year ended March 31, 2020. Our opinion on that, on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion. That's the highest form of assurance that we can give that the financial statements are fairly presented. And you recall that there's two sets of financial statements within your audit report. There's a government, what's called the government-wide financial statements and then the fund financial statements. The government-wide is intended to be more like a business on a full accrual basis, which means we book long-term assets, long-term liabilities on the balance sheet. It includes some things that aren't booked within the fund financial statements. If I can, I just kind of wanted to highlight a few things from the, the statements. And the, in the government-wide financial statements, the balance sheet statement and net position, a couple of items of interest. Cash investments were up about $94,000 this year. There's also receivables of about $809,000, which relates to the remaining installment, a second installment on the 2019 property tax levy. And then, there's also a liability booked for your net pension liability. And what that is, is with IMRF, you make your required contributions. They keep those funds on hand, hold them separately on behalf of the township. And then, they do a calculation of what, what benefits have been earned to date, the projected payments of those, you know, discounted back and compare that to the assets on hand. So, right now, you had a pension liability of about $64,000. Last year, that number was about $143,000. So, I think a couple of factors contributed that. The investments did well at IMRF this year, which helped the, the value of what was on hand with them. And so, I think, and then there's some assumption changes or some assumptions that were made. You know, the actual results came in favorably compared to those assumptions. So, that pension liability came down. On a full accrual basis, you had a positive bottom line of just over $1,000. So, it was almost a break even year on a full accrual base. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. That, that was fun. You actually had a loss on a full accrual basis of about $200,000. That reduced your net assets by about 9%. Some of that is related to the pension. Even though net pension liability went down, there's some other, there's these deferred inflows and deferred outflows that will be recognized in future years. Those, those increased, which contributed to the change in the bottom line there. And the fund, the fund financial statements is what you're normally used to seeing. You know, you have your general mental health and general assistance funds. Overall, the general fund had a small loss of about $64,000 compared to budgeted loss of almost, you know, you budgeted for a loss of about $740,000. Revenues were over budget by about $72,000. Expenses were under budget by about $590,000. There's a lot of capital outlay built into that budget, kind of as a, you know, almost like a contingency. So, that was a big factor in the expenses being under budget. But for the most part, expenses were under budget in all categories in the general fund. The mental health, the community mental health fund had a loss of $80,000 compared to budget loss of $180,000. Revenues were again slightly over budget. And expenses were about $87,000 under budget. And that was related primarily to discretionary grants and new initiatives. And then, the general assistance fund had a positive bottom line of about $43,000 this year. Revenues were about $24,000 over budget and expenses were under budget as mostly related to the home relief expenses. As far as IMRF is concerned, it was 93.4% funded this year, which was up from 86.59 in the prior year. We made about eight adjustments to the books, but they, most of them were small. The combined net effect was only a little over $3,000. And then, we also make adjustments to convert the records to the full accrual basis for the government-wide financial statements. Because your books are kept on a fund, on the basis, on what's called the modified accrual basis. But it's, it's how the fund financial statements are recorded. So, we make adjustments to convert those records to the full accrual basis. We really didn't have any issues in terms of getting information, getting supporting documentation. A lot of it was done electronically this year. But we appreciate the cooperation we got from Vera and everybody here and as well as the folks at Damani. We certainly appreciated their help as well.
I have to say, I never meant to.
Yeah, sometimes we, sometimes, yeah. I mean, it's amazing how much we've been able to do electronically. It's not ideal, but you know, people making it work. So, we appreciate that.
I'll tell you that I've started committing more of our, you know, I used to get some invoices electronically and just print them. Now, I save them electronically because those will be the ones that we ask for.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I think a lot of the trend has always been in a lot, I think, a lot of places to kind of, to go paperless and to store things electronically. And it certainly has sped that process up for a number of our clients. And it's something we've always tried to, to do. So, it's, I'm just ready to get back to normal, but that's me.
Questions?
Is there any area of special concern that we should take, you know, rather than the charge that you just listed?
No, I mean, I think overall, you know, I said, I think, you know, we make some adjustments that are kind of typical ones we make each year. And so, you know, they kind of offset often. So, I think overall, the records are in pretty good shape. Like I said, Damani, it's, it's good to have that outside eyes coming in and helping with the monthly closings and all. I think, even though we make some adjustments, I think the records that you're using to make decisions internally provide good evidence for that. So, I don't necessarily have concerns there. And like I said, we, we see the support, we see the approvals and things like that. So, I think those are all necessary controls. And the board has that role of being the oversight. And yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's obviously a key control and something that I know you guys take seriously.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate it. And everybody should have gotten their copies of this and then the rest will be filed in the necessary quarters in very near future. Okay. So, let, we can double back now to grants, which are in your folder. There's only one grant application. It is from Riverside Brookfield High School. And former chief Lane Nieman was supposed to be here, but with all of the critical things going on in schools as they're about to open, they had a very important board meeting that he had to call, he had to attend tonight and left me a message last minute that he would not be able to be here. As you can see, however, this application was really for safety purposes. It was for PPE, masks, thermometers, a radio for a newly created nurse's office. And let's see, in preparation for the students to return to the building. And we don't know when and how much that's going to be exactly yet. There's some plans for in school and we don't know when, when things are going to change. What is your pleasure with this grant? Do you have any questions? I'm afraid I don't have a lot to tell you about it, but.
Can I make a motion that we approved the grant to Harvey High School for $2,550?
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to grant Riverside Brookfield High School the safety grant of $2,550. Is there any discussion?
The only clarification I'd like is this is the actual district. Because we get a lot of applications from different groups. So, this would be the district asking, it's not, it's too old age.
Right.
Because the assistant principal signed it and Lane also, you know, is a school liaison officer. So, I'm pretty certain.
And in this case, we would, we would approach it the same way we've approached other such grants. We don't actually write a check to the, the other taxing body. We purchase the items that they've requested.
And on that page, point of, is it shows where the companies are.
Right.
That the different checks would go to, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Then, since this is an expenditure, clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. Next item is simply for your information. I do have the authority to do this. And having reviewed the needs of the clients coming to me and so forth, I have once again, I know I did this just a couple of years ago, but that was 25 years in the making for that increase. And just having reviewed with other townships as well, pardon?
It seems to be a common trend sometimes.
Yes, but yeah, sometimes we need to catch up. So, I have, as of the 1st of August, and I haven't actually written a check for that yet, but as of the 1st of August, I am increasing the general assistance flat grant to $500. I've run the numbers and even if we had a big uptick, you know, we can manage it. We have the funds and we should be spending them on the purpose for which they are raised, so.
What was it?
It has been 400 for the last couple of years. And before that, it was 300 ad nauseam. It was since the 90s, it was 300.
That's funny.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's long overdue. When I'm looking at their financial situation and I'm looking at rents that on a good day, their rent is 700 or more a month. If they're renting a very small place and, you know, the, the check doesn't even really help with that. So, 500 is what I'm raising it to. And this is for your information. So, I have served my, my duty in that.
Vera, there is much needed.
Yes.
Is that like the top end? Is there?
No, there's no top end. We could, I could go higher. We don't get a lot of takers for it.
Right.
But, you know, I, I also, you don't want to make it a disincentive because usually, this is just a bridge. In most cases, this is while people are either job hunting and ineligible for unemployment benefits because of whatever they did before or how, how they left. Or in most of the cases I've encountered, it's been while people are waiting to qualify for disability, so.
Would you feel, would you want to have some more, some discretion?
Well, I have the discretion. I have the discretion. My only duty is to report to you and make it part of the public record when I've changed that. I know that I have the discretion to go higher. I'm reluctant to go higher and then have to at some point wind it back. I can always increase it if I find that this isn't doing it. Even months from now, I could do that again if necessary.
But I mean, on an individual basis, so if someone comes in.
Oh, I, no, I don't have that discretion. Once I fix a flat amount. If we were a needs-based township, then that could be the case. But, and then it would be based on their need of what I would do.
Right.
On a flat grant township, which is what we are and most townships in this region of the, of the state are, I, it's got to be that or nothing, so. Again, if I find that there's, there's a need to increase that, I will. But right now, I find people are very grateful for getting what they do. And sometimes I get nice notes afterwards from people that were helped by it, got on their feet. And I just got one like that this week, so that made me feel good. Okay. There's no other questions. Onto just a discussion. We have established official township email addresses. You have a little item there that shows you what we pay for reserving that email each month. I'm just questioning, I started sending sometime back to those emails, but I found people weren't checking them. I'd just like to verify if you intend to use it. A lot of people like to separate their personal from their township emails. And if not, I would ask if you would mind if we release that email if you don't intend to use it. So, I'll just go around, or if you want to tell me afterwards, just let me know as soon as possible so that we can make that change. Do any of you actually use it on a regular basis?
I don't, but I do start.
Yeah.
Yeah, me also.
Right. And I know you may need to get a new password to establish it if you didn't do it or, or didn't intend to. But, you know, you don't have to make it public here, but please let me know, send me a text or an email within the next couple of days so that we can basically decide and go forward. Next item is the continuation of exercise class broadcasts. It, it doesn't look like we are really in a position to start back with the in-person classes yet, especially with things wavering back and forth. Some of the physical fitness classes had actually gotten the okay and then they were pulled back again to 10 people. And so, I don't want to get things started. I did an analysis of what it cost us, what it cost us for other programs that we are right now not doing. And it's perfectly within our budget for us to continue to tape them. Actually, now I think they're going to be taping more of them, bunched up a little bit more because it's harder to get the crew now that many of them are students and they'll be busy with online or other classes going forward. So, just wanted to make you aware. It did go into the newsletter, which should be published shortly. And wanted you to, to know and spread the word that the classes are available online. Any questions or comments?
How's the response been for this?
So, it's been slow, but we've stopped getting the calls from people saying, when are the classes going to start? Because I think they're actually tuning in now.
Good, okay.
So, and we're also giving a very clear explanation of how to find the classes in this newsletter that's coming forward. Because if the people aren't online a lot, they're not seeing it on our website. So, it will be in this upcoming newsletter and we hope to get it, an uptick. Maybe we'll get more interest when, when we actually go to in-person classes then. Any other questions? Then, the next, next item is the appointment. The mental health board had asked for a nominee. I'm going to abstain from this discussion because there is somebody with the same last name as myself in this position, but to be nominated. The mental health board was looking for someone with some experience, with, with some mental health issues. And they were looking for some youth on this board. And when I put the word out, I had a few people suggest this person. So, I will let one of you speak to it. You have the resume of the individual and you have the appointment resolution. So, I'm willing to respond to any questions, but if one of you would like to make a motion about this or, or question it.
I would like to make a motion to approve Adam Wilt to the Riverside Township Mental Health Board.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Drapka, to appoint Adam Wilt to the mental health board. And that would be for commencing September 1st of this year, terminating December 31st of 2023, which is the typical term.
Term.
Any questions, any discussion?
I think it's a great choice.
Excellent choice.
Then, if I hear no more, the resolution of the Board of Trustees would be approving an appointment to the mental health board of Adam Wilt of 511 Long Common Road in Riverside as a member of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board for a term commencing September 1st, 2020 and terminating on December 31st, 2023. All ordinances and resolution or parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. And this resolution will be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption. And clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I think he'll bring some, some good insights to it, so thank you very much. Next is the supervisors' report. Things are still, you know, in the changing every day mode. The newsletter was sent to the printer on August 6th with updates of the items that we had agreed needed publicizing. And we are using another printer, which was recommended by one of our trustees this time. We had no problem with the other, but we're giving somebody else a shot at it. Let's see how it goes. The bridge paint job, I had given you a couple of, a couple of reports about that previously. Surprisingly, that a proper coating will cost a whole lot more than it did last time. But I'm inclined to think that we need to put out for bids with this firm putting together the specifications as best as possible. And then, we'll go from there. I think that we had a relatively irresponsible bid that took it last time. And it was kind of a local painter that really, their, their indications are that for a proper job, you need to remove the prior coats, you need to tent it so that the dust from that sanding doesn't go all over. And there's a lot of steps to it. So, they do expect that it will be more in the three-figure, you know, the six-figure range than the $18,000 that we paid seven years ago or eight years ago and now are regretting, so.
Does this cover, sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no, absolutely.
But does this cover like some repairs? Because there are some repairs that need to be done. So, they'll give us the lock, stock and bear.
That's what we would put out for bids, yes, to fix all of it. And still in question is whether to paint or replace the screens that are part of the, the railings. Either way, it can fail. So, you know, I just want to go forward and get the, get this rolling. So, I wanted you to know. And the other thing is, you know, this is a project that was probably kept under prevailing wage last time. Or was, you know, dodged it by some methods and I don't want to do that. We agreed to pay prevailing wage and we need to, to do this the right way. We agreed to pay prevailing wage, and we need to, to do this the right way, so...
Plus, so many more people are using it.
I'm sorry?
So many more people are using it now.
Right.
You know, since everybody's at home going for walks.
Right, right.
And there's also going to be a time where it's going to be closed, if they're tenting it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully we can make that at a time when people can go other places again. Anyway, otherwise, the building inspection proposals, that I, I had a couple of those at our last meeting, I have spoken with API again, they did the elevator project, they're very easy to work with, and even though their bid is so much less, I think that it's still a responsible offer, and I am going, I have actually signed that it was within my spending power, and I have signed that agreement for them to come out and do the inspection of the building, and so that we can start truly budgeting on a longer-term basis to figure out what we need to do. There are some projects that we know need doing, we know that those are going to be priority items, and I need to get the ball rolling on getting those things done.
And what's the total on that supervisor?
So that's 1,800 is there, is what I, that's not what WJE is, what API, yes. So it'll be an $1,800 agreement for them to deliver the same kinds of deliverables that the other bidder was supposed to deliver, anyway. I've also, I've looked into some grants, especially one from Cook County regarding COVID-19, was called to my attention, and I looked into, pulled together all of the expenditures that we've had regarding COVID-19, and frankly, we wouldn't even qualify yet. I mean, we've been, we've been shopping so responsibly that I, even to start filling out the forms, I would have to have spent 1,000 more than I've already spent. So I don't think, unless something else comes along, I'm going to be applying for those grants. Farmers market vouchers, the redemption has been a little bit slow, as, as usually happens, but the produce is also just starting to come into its prime, so about one-third of the vouchers that we've issued so far have been used, and so that's not too bad, and, you know, we're, it's working out well, so... We also, oh, but the word did get out, and so we've had some people ask about food pantry just because they heard it comes with vouchers for the, for the farmers market. And if people need it, more power to them. Anyway, the final thing that we've been looking at is, and we've announced it actually in the, in the newsletter, is that we're going to try some of the movie showings. Again, people are clamoring for something to do. When you see this setup, if people sit this way, we use the big screen in here, we've checked with the sound, with the controlled sound, it actually is pretty good. So we're going to see how that works, and we're going to start that later this month. I don't, I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after that we're going to start it, and we'll see. If nobody comes, nobody comes, it doesn't cost us much, so...
Right.
It's only the snacks that we buy, and we will make sure that they're individually pre-sealed snacks. We're not going to make popcorn and have people reaching in, so... All right. Onward, trustees' reports. Trustee Lumpfer, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Trustee Highlandbach?
The mental health board is not meeting until September yet.
Okay. Trustee Dropka?
I don't have a, a report, but I did have a question about security concerns in the building and recent events. Had, were there any kind of issues that you'd like to expand upon?
So, yeah, thank you, thank you for reminding me. We did have an incident last week where someone who was obviously troubled came into the building and was just kind of knocking around, was wearing a mask and so forth, and was writing something on one of the little pads by us, grabbed the little note that she wrote, threw it into our office under our shield, and it made no sense to us at that point. Then she walked around the corner and pulled the fire alarm and ran out of the building.
I heard that.
She was caught, she was taken for some psychiatric evaluation. Things like that do happen. We probably will be investigating, upgrading maybe some of the security measures that we have in the building, some of the cameras and so forth, because it's pretty old technology, and there's some much better things, or a lot less available, so that, that will be another project that we're going to look at. I know that the village has also been taking some measures. They've actually been securing some of their shields, they're going to make them less penetrable, and so they had some, some people out the other day taking measurements and so forth, so going along with that, we'll see. Not that we've had a lot of incidents, but that was one last week that...
Just takes one.
It only takes one, you're right. And there's so many troubled people in the world, and so many odd things going on, one never knows, so... But also, in the process of all of the, of the elevator, and it's getting, it's final inspection tomorrow, I should add, and in the whole process of that, with installing smoke alarms that really weren't in there before, it was grandfathered in, so now, finally, working with the fire department, thank you to Dave Pirdanak, who's, who did all the research, because nobody seemed to know how to set up the, the controls for those alarms, and so it's getting all reset, redone. We now have the, we have our own copy that is in the vault of how it's programmed, and, you know, we won't have that problem of not knowing what the basic program is anymore. But in that process, we're making some things more secure in the building as well. So I think everybody's having a better understanding, including the police and fire department, of how all of our security systems are working within the building, so something comes of something. Thank you for asking about the security. If you have nothing else, then, Trustee Clark, did you have anything?
I, for the annual township officials meeting, that's usually, that is held in Springfield in November, I think everything is going to be virtual this year.
That's what I understand.
But because I serve on the state board of trustees, they asked me, you know, what suggestions I would have to fill the three hours where the trustees meet, just the trustees. So I suggested our mental health films on anxiety and suicide, and then also maybe we can use one of our exercise, you know, in between, get people, use, use part of our exercise video.
That'll be for the trustees' meeting?
So I just want to make sure that that's okay with everybody.
I think it's wonderful. Share it, the lighter, the better. That, that will also be part of what's in the newsletter, the how to find it and so forth, so...
Yeah, I do, I also have a question. Are we done? I don't want to...
I think, or, Trustee Clark, are you?
I'm finished, yeah, I just wanted to, you know...
It's a generator, at least for the office and the elevator.
So, of course, the power went on at 1:00 after the staff left at noon today. It was actually better for them to be here, and I was, I was working from home, and I was, I had access, I had power at home, so I had access to all the emails, and then I was communicating with them, because the phones didn't work either, so we were communicating by text and so forth. Typically, the power outages that we encounter here happen in the afternoon, and it doesn't involve more than an hour, maybe we close early. So this was a very unusual one, I think, for the whole village and for the whole community, the three villages around here that have all been battling it. I think North Riverside, according to Landmark, was hit even worse than Riverside, so...
Lions got it real bad.
Yeah, Lions did, yeah, Lions, I think that was what, we were part of the grid here while we were out. And yes, the village does have the, a generator, so it's another item that we can look into.
Yeah, at least for our office and maybe the elevator. I mean, I don't think we have to do the whole building.
Right, right, no, I think you're right.
Yeah.
So, sounds like a good idea.
Where would you put it? Doesn't it have to go outside?
No, there's roofs and, I mean, there's air conditioning units, there's, you know, there's, there's places to put these things.
Okay, that's what...
I'm not sure where the villages is for that matter, so we can figure it out. Well, we'll have to investigate it, I don't, I have no idea. It's a topic for another time, so I will, I will start looking into that, however. Okay. If there's no other trustees' reports, and there's no mental health report this month, onto unfinished business and the swinging bridge repairs, I really already pretty much covered in my report, so I will keep you posted as things develop. We, similarly, the proposals for the inspections, I've already addressed. If anybody has any other questions about that, I'd be glad to address them. Just for your information, is the, the Adigirati report. Again, you know, it's, it's hard when we're not, we don't have anything to promote to get any upticks in interest, but we have been, we still get some inquiries, and you can see that report for yourselves. And again, for your information, the Thursday movie screenings, and I don't, I did not bring the movies that we're going to be showing, but I believe that the first one is going to be a, a newer one, and I think it might be one of the movies about Mr. Rogers, if I'm not mistaken.
About what?
Mr. Rogers.
Oh, yeah, that was, he was good.
Yes.
That was a great one, I saw that one.
All right. And I don't have anything else, so we can move on to warrants, unless somebody has anything for me to raise for future meetings. And, Trustee Clark, you want to present the warrants?
I move that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant in the amount of $22,663.36.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve the general warrant for August of 2020 in the amount of $22,663.36. Clerk Blau?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I make a motion to approve the utility warrant in the amount of $1,045.11. The payroll warrant of $17,921.04. The health warrant for $1,460.45. General assistance warrant of $1,760. And the food pantry warrant of $817.58.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Clark to those warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I can invite Trustee Lumpfer, and the motion is to approve the following warrants for August of 2020, the utility warrant in the amount of $1,045.11. The payroll warrant in the amount of $17,921.04. The health warrant in the amount of $1,460.45. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $1,060, uh, $760, sorry. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $817.58. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you very much. And you have all your other financial reports. So with that, I will adjourn the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, we adjourn this beautiful meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Clark, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.